To call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting on Wednesday, November 4th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everyone for attending our meeting this evening. First on the agenda is Joan McAndrew, Knowledgement Rotary Club Award. So, we have in the audience, oh, okay, I can read her off of there, it's easy to read it over here. So, just so you know Joan, we weren't aware that you-
I understand, I didn't go, I didn't tell anybody, I didn't know I was supposed to tell anybody.
She didn't want her friends to have to pay.
I know, yeah, they wanted you to buy tickets and I don't like to tell them people that, "If you want to come, you gotta buy a ticket." I'm not that way.
Well, you know, so when we learned about it, we didn't actually learn about it that day, but I don't think any of us was able to, you know, to attend. But, so then, we said, "Well, you know, that's not right. We like to recognize people for the work that they do for our town." So, I get to do another, one of the great things I like about being chairperson on the Board of Selectmen is we have a proclamation for you. So, I would like to read the proclamation. So, proclamation and certificate of recognition, whereas Joan McAndrew has served over thirty years of dedicated dependable service, both paid and unpaid, to the town of West Bridgewater in various capacities, including the water department, police department, trailer collector's office, cultural council, historical commission, council and aging board of directors, and as an elections volunteer, boy, you're busy, huh? And whereas during the same span of time, Joan McAndrew has also volunteered throughout the community with the emergency fund, the West Bridgewater food pantry, St. Anne's Church, and the REACH program. And whereas Joan McAndrew has been most recently recognized for her amazing contributions toward the betterment of her community for more than three decades by receiving the Rotary Club of Bridgewater's West Bridgewater Citizen of the Year Award. Now therefore, we the Board of Selectmen of the town of West Bridgewater do hereby recognize Joan McAndrew for all her outstanding service and contributions toward the betterment of the town upon her receipt of this most prestigious award, and do hereby declare her to be a truly dedicated public servant. And further, with the power vested in us by the town of West Bridgewater, do hereby declare Thursday, November 5th, as Joan McAndrew Day in the town of West Bridgewater and charge all citizens to take notice of the same. And witness whereof, we have here two sides of our hands, and cause the great seal of the town of West Bridgewater to be affixed this fourth day of November, 2015. The Board of Selectmen Nancy Maloney, Eldon Madera, and Jerry Lawrence.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, let's, um-
This is Joan's second day in town.
Entertain, entertain a motion for a recess.
So moved.
Second?
Move, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're in recess, to, back into open session for my recess on the Wednesday, November 4th, Board of Selectmen meeting. Next on the agenda is Cochise Estate presentation, and we have representatives of these folks, right? So, you want to come forward, identify yourself for the record, and let's hear what you have to say.
Sure. My name's Bisher Hashem, I'm a Cochise Estate developers' Inc. Thank you for inviting us, or asking us to come before you to give you an idea about the project. This is the Haciotes Farm on Scotland Street. And what we're proposing, it's a 40B project. What we're proposing really is two separate projects as one application. A normal subdivision, single-family house subdivision, a total of eighty-one lots, and a new concept, it's a village concept, thirty-nine units, where it's, the units are cottages, where it promotes decks, front porches and back decks with green in the middle. Most houses do not front on streets, actually, they back onto streets. The front is onto a green, it's kind of like the old style, living to promote people communicating with each other and, you know, talking to each other. And this is, this is the, this is the depiction of it. There is four clusters of between nine and thirteen houses. This concept really originated in Seattle, Washington, and it's coming to, coming our way. It's been a while, moving east. So, and it has proposed a gardening area for people to, like, again, garden and congregate. The parking is separate from the, there are garages for each unit, but they are separate from the unit. And again, that's the, this village concept. The two-
So, are these the village, in the village pie, are they, how many bedrooms are there?
Two and three bedrooms.
Two and three bedrooms.
But they're designed-
Well, it's kind of small to be able to accommodate two or three bedrooms, based on that picture.
They are, they are twenty-four by forty-eight feet, two levels, so they're about two thousand square feet.
Oh, okay.
It's not really cottages, more cluster houses then.
Well, they're designed like cottages. And we have a similar project like that proposed in Norfolk, Massachusetts. There, we can, we'd like to, actually, in the application, it shows the floor plan layout of it. And what it is, it's designed for, where most of them, well, you could have a master suite on the first level or on the second level. So, it caters more, it really doesn't lend itself to having, although I'm sure there will be some families living there, but it is not very conducive to having family. It's more, it targets more empty nesters and young couples starting out, where the common ground, the green, will be maintained by the homeowners association.
But they're two- or three-bedroom homes for empty nesters?
Correct.
It's more believable with a one- or two-bedroom, but three bedrooms says family to me.
That's not a good correlation, but-
No, actually, actually, we, right now, we're building three bedrooms.
Yeah.
And what it is, it's the first, the master suite, the three-bedroom units have the master suite on the first level, and a lot of people do like to have two bedrooms in case, you know, their kids are in college or away, they come visit them. But, but yeah, there will be families, no doubt of it, but it's not really conducive. A family will more likely live here than here.
Yeah, right.
And actually, this, the prices are going to be pretty comparable, actually. These are going to be a little bit higher than these. So, a family will probably more likely live here.
So, the cost of the cottages is more than the cost of the-
Yes.
The homes on the side.
Close enough, but it's slightly higher.
So, what's the benefit then? So, where's the, where's the benefit there with this cottage type of, style of homes compared to these over here? So, where's the benefit?
To the consumer?
Yeah.
Well, the market really determines what it wants. The reason why people are seeking this is they are seeking more carefree lifestyle, but that's yet more of a community where people, you know, sit down and just chat with each other and communicate with each other. This is designed to maximize interaction to people. These people will interact, go into the garages, to their parking, in these gathering areas, on the porches. It's, it, people are more looking, yearning for the old-day living where people talk to each other. And this will be, I'm sorry?
You mean they don't just text each other, even actually talk?
Right, well, they'll sit on, they'll sit on their decks and text each other.
Text each other, yeah, right, yeah.
Right. This will be environmentally friendly construction. They will have solar energy and very highly efficient homes, highly insulated, above the code requires. So, this is another, people are also seeking that, the small carbon footprint. These two projects, they have nothing in common except the two things, actually. There's a park here that we're proposing for recreational area for both, and a sewer treatment plant.
Sewer treatment plant to, for the sewer for all of them people.
For all of them, correct.
Yeah, so sewer treatment plant. So, tell you about the sewer treatment plant, I'd like to know, learn more about what that's going to be all about.
It's, I mean, it's, it's, right now, it's being designed. It's supposed to handle forty thousand gallons per day. It's designed to handle that. And what it is, is once you install it, you have to keep monitoring it on daily basis, and that's part of the operation of it.
So, is there an ongoing, if I could ask, so is there an ongoing fee associated with every one of these houses?
Absolutely.
So, it'll be a private community with, there'll be a homeowner association even in this, even in this section?
Correct. But the home, there'll be two different homeowners associations.
Yeah, I understand that.
This association will be responsible for maintaining the common ground. This is just, nothing, just the-
And the roads.
And the roads.
And the gray areas, there are walkways?
This here?
Yes.
Yes, these are, these are walkways here. And there's common walk all the way to the park.
So, how many houses in all?
One-twenty.
One-twenty?
Correct.
And-
Together, both of them together.
And how many will be affordable?
A quarter of it, thirty houses.
The only thing I'm concerned about is, and you're going to be concerned about it too, you know, West Bridgewater be in a wet place, and that's one of our places that really is where- and I know this was perfect in the summer, and we had about the driest season. I hope you, hey, you're going to be putting a lot of fill to get these things up.
That's a very, very good point.
You know, I, but then again, you know, I got a broker's license, and I took years ago, took a lot on North Elm Street, there was, they say you couldn't build on it. And we ended up with a walkout cellar. There is no water in the thing. Of course, they use the crushed stones and fill it in because they have cellars, and then the water just goes through. So, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, you can't build on a wet thing, if you do it properly.
Exactly.
But, you know, doing properly, it takes money.
It does.
Yeah, see?
Absolutely.
That's the only concern I have, of being a, you know, that being a wet area and, you know, and of course, that's a lot of houses.
Sure. That's a very good point, and we have, I'd like to respond to two different points. Number one, we have identified where the flood plain is. And that's been witnessed and approved by the local conservation commission, and the wetland line. So, and that's not, the flood plain is not during the dry season, this is the highest, you know, the flood plain is identified by the state. So, our-
There's no compensate ponds or anything off of that?
There's no-
It's, it's just what you got there?
Yes.
Okay.
And as part of this project, the rest of the farm, which is about a hundred acres or so, will be, will be donated to the town for recreation, including the Cochise Trail here, and including, and including the, there is a canoe loading area, and all of that will be donated to the town. Also, I would like to say that this is not our first rodeo. We've been around, we've done many subdivision, many 40B projects throughout the region. One of them is in town, that's been completed, and costs, what's called cost certified by Mass Housing. Cost certification means, is like the seal, the seal of approval that everything was done appropriately. So, I understand your concern, it's a very valid concern, but the key word that you mentioned is if it's done properly, which that's what we do.
Yeah, well, that's what I said, you've got to work with the area you have, and you know what you got there, you know?
Yeah. Right now, we have six active subdivisions. Four of them are 40B projects, and we will be glad to take you over or show them to you or give you a list of them, if you can go on your own. We, we do a good job.
See, we just built a new high school, I'm just saying, all these, this is the one big seller. We got another one coming in, close to the Brockin Line. Yeah, well, I don't know, I haven't seen any proposal yet. The land has changed hands up there.
Perhaps she property.
And, you know, we'll be probably expecting something to come out of that property. But, like I said, hey.
I would encourage any of you, if you have any comments or concerns, to please forward them to Mass Housing as part of their approval or denial, or whatever they do, they will make sure that these points are addressed.
Yeah, we do have correspondence, it was in our packet-
Yeah, right.
From Mass Housing.
Yeah, Mass Housing, yeah.
So-
One thing I'd really like to see, and I know it wouldn't make the developer happy, but I'd like to see a sidewalk stretching Scotland Street in front of the existing homes to connect all three communities, the existing community and your new communities along Scotland Street. It would be a nice addition, and perhaps would be lessen the pain to all these people that have had hundreds of years of looking at a beautiful field, and they're going to lose that view now. But, one of the big things, and we'll be talking about a little bit of sidewalks in town, and, you know, this is going to put potentially up to a thousand new people in that area.
Sure.
And sidewalks on that street would be nice.
We are more than happy to engage in this dialogue. I would really urge you to submit any comments like that to the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, yeah, we will.
Because that, that's the dialogue we will be carrying on with them to, because we do recognize that we are causing an impact on the neighbors and the community, and we do recognize that we need to work with the community to mitigate some of that impact, and this is one of the items that, that's one of your concerns, we'll be happy to take a look at and see if there's something we can do on that.
How about water? What kind of a main goes down through there? Have you consulted water department?
But-
Maybe you should check with them too, because-
Yeah, well, the main goes to here, it stops here. These people are on wells.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
As part of one of our meetings with the neighbors, we committed to them to make sure we tie them onto the town water rather than the wells, at our cost.
Yeah, see, that's, that's an important, you know? Because I know we just got a business on Pleasant Street, and they're a developer, he's building three buildings, one is up. And he, he did the water down to, they had it, but they didn't have it down further. And he extended it down, you know? It's, you know, a lot goes in, and of course, that building is going to have to be sprinkled, you know, and they need the big-
Sure.
The big main. So, you should check with the water there too, and see.
Where on the map is Skim Milk Bridge? I see it on, I-
It'll be right where, we show a path going out to it, but it's right, it's a little bit off, but right where the town river comes up and meets where Maple Street would-
All right, and that is, was that part of the parcel that would be given if voted on? Okay. Oddly enough, reading minutes from selectman meetings from 1975, you'll see that bridge has been promised to the town since then, so, a lot of many years later.
We are here to fulfill that promise.
It would be nice to be done, and I know Ms. Doherty, if you don't know her by name, you know, she's the conservation secretary.
Yes.
She's been on that for years, but-
Actually, I would like to have the record reflect that it's thanks to her that this project was called Cochise Estate. She said, from the day one when I filed for it, she said, "What are you going to name it?" I said, "What do you think?" She said, "Cochise Estate." I said, "Right."
That's a Doherty way.
Hey, you never know.
That's a heavy travel road too, and it's really the old-style road too. You know, it's, you know, heavy, with heavy trucks from the Bridgewater Industrial.
Sure.
You know, it's like a shortcut, you know, they try to avoid the, the traffic.
That's true.
With everything going on, the center of town now, they try to avoid the center of town, you know? Get around it, so there's a lot of-
We are conducting right now a very extensive traffic study. We'll be also filing with the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, we're welcome to it through the Old Colony Planning Council, if you need traffic council and everything else, you can just go hold it.
Yeah, well, they're, they're doing that.
Oh, they're doing that, okay, all right.
They do those hoses and they-
Yeah, right, yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, any further questions?
No. I'd just like to add, I love the concept of the village houses. I think Nancy and I, I don't know, but Eldon, would love to see them as two bedrooms rather than three. I think three bedrooms just means you're building a subdivision in town and calling it a village. When it was here the last time, I was in favor of it, not everybody wants to have to maintain a yard and, you know, all the problems that come with owning a yard, and it'd be a nice option. We have some over sixty-five communities that are leased, and that creates nothing but problems for the tenants. So, this concept down this end, I greatly endorse. I just wish there were two bedrooms and a little bit smaller scale, maybe more of them, but smaller houses. I understand, you know, you have your numbers and have to do what you have to do, but that's my two cents.
I don't really have any trouble with this, I know that when you look at three, you look at families, and you probably think of schools and things like that, but that's a big undertaking over there, you know?
It is.
This will come back for us for-
We've done few subdivisions in town.
Yeah, yeah. There's got to be some give on both sides here, you know?
Absolutely, and we acknowledge that, and we're ready.
Yeah, right. I've been here a long time, and I know it works.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation.
Thanks for coming in.
Does the gentleman have anything that you wanted to add to the presentation? No? Okay.
I have one question. Is it possible, do you have another copy of this that could be left here? Because I assure you, tomorrow, there's going to be nine hundred people want to see this. So, if we could leave them in the office.
For those who come, we normally hold, we didn't want to do, be presumptuous. We do normally hold a meeting, a town meeting, where we send letters to all the neighbors, all the owners.
Right.
And we reserve a hall and make a presentation, and we get their input, and we address a lot of their concerns before the meeting. Because like, I know, I know-
Do you have a timeframe for that, when you think that's going to be?
The next couple of weeks. Actually, no, it'd be more like a month or so, because we are waiting for Mass Housing to communicate with us. I know, we already met with them once, on a side meeting after a conservation meeting.
Correspondents about the application.
Pardon me?
So, Mass Housing has already sent us copies on-
Yes, so I know some of them have issues which we're going to address, which fence between us and then whether agreeing, but we, this is the kind of input we welcome from them, and we'll definitely be having discussions with them, so, and-
You can just leave them with Maury.
Yeah, and Mr. Gagnon has our contact information if anybody wants to contact us.
Well, like Selectmen Lawrence just said, if you can keep this here for those people that are watching this meeting, that might want to come down to the town hall and take a closer look at what the plan is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But thank you for your presentation and answering our questions, and, you know, we're, you know, we're only in the early stages of the process right now, I know there's very, there's more meetings.
Absolutely, many.
That sort of thing, but-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Taking the time to do that, we appreciate it. We'll move on to the recess. Gilbert Corporation being asked to auto-repair, is that, kind of a red, okay? Six fifty-one North Elm Street, application for garage repair.
Yes.
Would you like to come forward, sir, and just identify yourself for the record?
Yeah, my name is Gilbert Alshami.
You can sit down though, you don't have to stand.
No, I'm not in court.
Make sure you're up here so the microphone can, you know, unless you want to stand, I mean, that's-
No, I'm all right.
Good evening.
How are you? You're back, huh?
Phil Mary, how are you? Nice seeing you.
Yes, I am back.
There we go, so we got another, we got another victim here, right?
Very well said.
I hope not.
I was just kidding, sorry.
That's okay.
Breaking the ice.
Bad news starting.
Okay, so you want to go forward with what you're proposing to do?
Yes, I would like to take over the place to do some auto-repair, and slicking.
All right, so we have the application, we have correspondence here from the, from the building inspector's office about some stipulations with this.
Right.
Handicap accessible space to be painted, that's all set.
I will educate of that, yeah.
That says well set here.
Yeah, he was over there today, but I missed him, I was in and out, and I have some pictures if you'd like to see them.
Ah, yeah, we'd like to see some pictures. Comply with signage requirements, it says comply with signage requirements.
Right.
And inspection required before opening. So, all the paperwork is in order though, is what we're being told here. So, it was just the thing with the handicap accessible space to be lined, painted.
Give me a second, I'm not that good with this stuff.
All right, so, special closing, parking, handicap space, only one registered, only one unregistered vehicle allowed on-site, right? Oh, yeah, that looks nice.
This is a handicap sign, yeah.
That was just today?
No, I did this a week ago.
Oh, there's notes there.
I like, yeah, well, I did it all the way around the W.
Oh, nice, okay. All right, good, very good.
Question, Nancy, did I hear you say one unregistered car? Did that change prior to that, it was always two?
That's what it says on the, on the-
I didn't see it on the-
Application. Number four, only one unregistered vehicle on-site must be stored in fenced-in area.
It used to be two.
That, I don't know, that's why we do this, you know, so, we're all in the same age.
I actually think they are allowed to, but please don't quote me on that. We'll find out and make sure it's the allowed.
Two is the standard for anybody, I think, residential.
Right, yeah, so that's why we do this though, so we get everything all squared away. And you had a bigger picture of the site plan?
This is very similar, but it's signed up by the building inspector, that's the current plan.
Okay, so, the license, then, we've got to get some clarification on this before we go ahead and go ahead and have this signed. I need to get clarification on item four about the unregistered vehicles. Aquafore Protection Zone Two must take precautions when dealing with engine fluids and hazardous materials.
Could we, could we take a vote subject to? I mean, so, we won't be holding up on-
What's our license, so we could just amend it?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I'll make a motion, this thing is granted when we get the additional information, and, you know, that'll, so he can move along, get in there, you know?
And again, just please make it subject to the conditions put forth by the building inspector.
Okay, I'll add that to the motion.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion.
Okay, moved.
I'll second, but I do have some questions.
Seconded, okay.
Yeah, go ahead, still in discussion.
I just want to emphasize, I know, you know, the former owner there, it wasn't kept in the best of condition. I can assure you, we'll never let it get like that again. So, it's not that we're treating anybody any different, we tried and tried and tried to give some benefit of the doubt to a gentleman that ran his business with a big heart and was very good to a lot of people, but it got very deplorable. You need to keep in mind that it's a very old business running in a residential area, and on one side, you have nothing but residents that take great care of the property, and we hope you'll do the same.
And make sure it's all clean.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's your end, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Paul Mary.
Thanks.
Excited to have you to town, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Have fun in your vacation?
I'll call you tomorrow, but like- Later. You'll come by tomorrow, right?
Come back in.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Alright, so we're right on plan, actually. We're gonna move on to team leaders for strategic planning, so we restarted the strategic planning process that started six years ago, or five and a half years ago, maybe. And in this new structure that we have, we have team leaders for each one of the goals, and so we're just gonna go through a quick update on the goals in strategic planning. And do we have Jimmy Car... How do I say that?
Charis.
Charis, okay, great, so I get to finally meet you.
Yes.
Alright.
Sorry, I've been out of touch.
That's okay, that's fine. Alright, so, we're gonna start with goal number one, which is master plan. So, Mr. Charis, if you'd like to come forward up here.
Sure.
And talk to us a little bit about it. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for stepping up to take on this leadership role in our strategic planning. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to go through what we've done with strategic planning to date, and I don't know, I know you weren't involved in it originally, but I don't know what your understanding is of what the process is. So, it looks like you did your homework, though, you got your notebook and all this stuff, so...
A little bit.
Go right ahead.
Well, I'm still kind of in the process of familiarizing myself with the previous master plan. I've also been looking at similar master plans in the surrounding area to kind of get a sense of where things have been headed since we last visited this. I've been in contact with a few people, there were two other folks that showed interest in working on the master plan. Mallory put me in contact with them, so still kind of in the early stages and not anything concrete to report yet, but I wanted to reach out to you and kind of get the ball rolling and just make sure that, that what I think the master plan is, is actually what, you know, we should be working on before we go too far down any path. So, that's kind of where I'm at right now, not too much to report yet, because I haven't been involved that long.
Okay, so, if you can back up here a little bit.
Sure.
So, who are the other two members that you talked to?
Gary Keith.
Yep.
And Jeff Mayhew.
Okay, so Gary Keith and Jeff Mayhew. I have talked to Gary Keith as an effort, and then Jeff Mayhew, yes, okay. Alright, so, I haven't talked to him, but I did talk to Gary Keith. Okay, so, have you gotten to the point where you're gonna, like, maybe schedule a, kind of a meeting of folks and see where that's...
Yeah, we've talked about it, we haven't nailed down a date yet, but, yeah, hopefully soon.
So, do you think that's gonna be something that you're gonna do in the evening?
I think so, probab...
During the day?
Probably during the evening.
Yep.
I work in Boston, so it's tough getting back here.
Right.
But, yeah, certainly in the evening, or, you know, on Saturday, or whenever anyone's available, I'm pretty flexible other than...
Okay, so, we have your email address, right?
Yes.
Alright, so, what I'd like to be able to do is, because you're new to the process, you know, compared to the other, the other, you know, leaders, I'd like to hopefully be part of your committee, just to kind of help you along, because you weren't part of it in the beginning, but...
No, I appreciate that.
You're a pretty intelligent guy, so it's not gonna be that hard, you know, we're not talking about, you know, brain surgery yet, but, you know, so, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
So, just tell me a little bit about, you know, why you got involved in this.
Sure. My wife and I bought our first house in West Bridgewater at the end of July.
Great choice.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're thrilled. I'm originally from New Hampshire, so it feels really close to where I grew up and kind of that same small-town feel, which is harder to find in Massachusetts. So, we're both really happy to be here, I noticed that that vacancy was there, and there and there, so eventually I thought, as long as I can, you know, realistically set aside enough time to, for it to be fair to the team, then it's a good way to get involved in the community and meet some neighbors.
Good, that's great, well, welcome.
Thank you.
For stepping up and helping.
Happy to be here.
Now, this thing was put together in, you know, in a booklet, and it sat there, you know, that's what it needs, it needs some energy.
Five years ago.
Yeah, and they, after a while, they gotta be updated, and, you know, looking at what we got there versus, you know, where we're going.
Sure.
Because it's very important to know what the future and the townspeople will certainly apply to us for looking into our future. And I'm glad you stepped forward and, you know...
Thank you, I agree.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, very good, so we'll be in touch then.
Yeah, great, I look forward to it.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you all as well.
Okay, so, staying on plan? Administrator Gagnon?
Sure, thank you.
Ready, you're up next.
I am, as you know, you selected me to be the team leader for branding.
We voluntarily told you.
And so, I reached out, and I'm pretty excited, I got a nice group of volunteers, it's a cross-section of the town. Superintendent Patty Oakley, Vice Chair of the Finance Committee Jerry Scrunchy, Fire Chief Lenny Hunt, Chairman of the Water Commissioners Don Azak, Steve Lang, who is the Chairman of the Economic Development Commission, Police Lieutenant Vic Flaherty, and Resident Jeff Mayhew. And I thought that that...
Jeff Mayhew's on two, huh?
He is.
Wow.
So... And, so I think this is a nice cross-section, because, for example, we have a handful of people such as Chief Hunt and Chairman Azak that have been in town between the two of them about, I don't know, two hundred years, or I should say a hundred and fifty, or whatever the number is. But we also have someone like Steve, who is younger, and Jerry, who has not been in town for a long time, so she has fresh eyes, so I think that that's a really good mix. We met as I placed a copy of the agenda from a meeting that we held last week. I called it a kickoff meeting, we put together a PowerPoint presentation, we looked at why branding is important, we actually looked at branding that businesses do, that sports teams do, and other municipalities do. And so, with that, we use that as a basis point to move to the next level, so, which is now going to be determining a slogan and a logo for the town. And then what we will do is, is that once we come to some consensus of four or five different options, we will then present it to the board at that time. So, that's where, that's where we are at this point.
Okay, good, very good, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So, your branding goals, so we're not gonna, we're actually gonna go through the branding, we're trying to brand the town, like, this is, this is what is West Bridgewater, yeah. Reverend Ashton was kind of like, what do you mean? So, yeah, branding, yeah.
And just gonna say at that time, it's a farmer.
Yeah, so what's our brand, where are we?
Exactly.
You know, it's a, it's a kind of like a marketing kind of thing as well, so, but, so, since we formed this branding group, so that means that we're gonna actually, you know, go through all this process, we're not gonna just say west is best and be done with it.
We certainly could put that as an option, we won't be making any final decisions, but, you know, for example, one of the slides...
Simple, right?
That's right. One of the slides is, for example, if you just say the word Bean Town, most people know that that's Boston. You don't have to live in Boston to know that.
Right.
You know, and some of the other examples was the Empire State City, we know is New York City, or the Big Apple is New York City.
Right.
So, there are many cities and towns throughout the country that have slogans and taglines that everybody knows. Now, I don't expect somebody from Duluth will probably know what West Bridgewater stands for, but we'll start small and expand from there. But I think we're gonna have some fun with this, and again, it's an opportunity for us to be able to, like you said, what do we stand for, and how do we communicate that?
I think it's a great opportunity to tie the general side of government with the school, too. A lot of times, there's a separation, and you'll hear a lot of people say, oh, the schools did this, or the towns, the town did that, and it's a good opportunity to pull the two together.
Yeah, well, for example, one of the goals that I brought to the table, and they all agreed, is that, for example, I asked everybody at this first meeting to bring two items. One was their business card, and two was their letterhead. And I used the following example, that if you worked for IBM, and you worked for IBM in Malaysia, or you worked for IBM in Boston, you probably have the same business card logo and the same, the same letterhead, it's just different addresses. And yet, when we were there, between the water department, the police department, the fire department, us, and the school, they were all different. And yet, we all work for the same employer and are at the same town, so we all agreed that we have to create like a oneness, if you will. And so, that's exactly where we're starting, and that's why having the school involved, and the water department involved, and the town side involved, is so critical to making sure that this allows us to have success in the future.
So, have you reached out to Metro South Chamber of Commerce? I had gone to one of their, I forget what it was called, what the session was, but we talked about, or they talked about branding, because we talked about Metro South being Metro South, and the branding of Metro South, and there was somebody in that organization that was leading this branding initiative. So, you might be able to get some help from them.
Will do.
I forget who it was, but they were working on that, so... Okay, great, thank you. Selectman Lawrence?
Yes, well, I have sidewalks, crosses, and trails, pedestrian crossings and trails, and I'm very fortunate, because there was a little sub freestanding committee somewhat pre-existing through Reverend Ashton, and it was the youth group, I believe, right?
Well, we just did some groundwork.
That had come to us before, asking about sidewalks, and so I've asked Reverend Ashton to co-chair with me. We did some posting, I did some posting and surveying on Facebook, or social media, and we got about eight or nine residents that want to serve on it. In addition to that, John Delano, our conservation agent, Julie Amrell is a representative from the school, and we would definitely need input and assistance from the highway superintendent and our safety officer, who I will hope would serve on the committee with us. We haven't met yet, Reverend Ashton is a master at hosting, and she hosts reach meetings and whatnot at the church, and the Riverbend Country Club also offered their facility during the winter if we wanted to hold meetings there. And a lot of the people that responded to the survey don't, I didn't want it just being sidewalks, it's all about pedestrians walking in public, in public safety, while walking. You know, I don't think just by the survey, a lot of people are even aware of the trail system that already exists in town, so we may be looking at some of the marketing point for that. And unfortunately, a lot of what the people that wanted to be involved, want to be involved for one purpose, and that's to get a sidewalk on their street. So, really, the sidewalk, we have to look at a practical avenue, and not only that, I've been doing some research on existing sidewalks, if you drive up and down Harvestwood Drive, for instance, the trees are beautiful along the streets, especially if you come out in blossom season, but going down the sidewalk, I don't think I ever realized how bad the sidewalks were. I used to think to myself, why are they complaining? At least they have sidewalks. And when these two little gems came into my life, we would try to walk down the sidewalk with a stroller, which was impossible, and I could only imagine trying to do that with a stroller now, where I'm sure the sidewalks are gonna worse, or a wheelchair, or other walking assistive devices. So, what we hope to do is take a survey, before we have a physical meeting, a survey of the town, where the sidewalks exist, and then collectively, with the assistance of the police department and the highway superintendent, get a list of where we want them, and see what funding's available. In talking with Julie from the school, we had gotten only so far with the funding for the safe routes to school, and then it kind of died out. We also have some bylaws that may be obsolete. We had attempted to get some sidewalks along some stretches of road that unfortunately didn't materialize, and perhaps that's gonna require a change of the bylaw, for instance, when they built the Riverbend apartment complex, it would have been nice, or even the Market Bastard, we should have required sidewalks along the stretch of those properties, we didn't. Also, when the new developments are going in, they require sidewalks on both sides of the street, which sounds wonderful and makes the neighborhood go great, but what we forget about is in twenty years or fifteen years, guess who has to maintain those sidewalks? The town, so you're doubling the...
Well, I know you requested them on one oh six, and then the plant, went to the planning board, they got no right to throw the thing out.
Well, that's something we need to...
I think, because if Board of Selectmen wish...
I agree, and that's something we need to, we need to make sure it doesn't happen again.
But I like your idea of looking at some of the, you know, I don't do a lot of walking, but the walking, I do like Tiffany Circle, it's a disaster. You talk of Harvest Drive, it's not only the sidewalks up there, but the curb. Those trees, like you said, they look good and all that stuff, but they, now all the, you know, now the requirement, they gotta back up those curves with cement.
Well, I think that, you know...
In the old days there, they just let it set them in the sand, and they bent, and, you know, you get a mess.
You're talking like you wanna be on that committee. You wanna be on that committee?
I can probably help that committee, because of my association up there with the Old Colony Planning Council and...
But I think the one, the key element is that we need sidewalks to go somewhere. People that live on a dead-end street, realistically, sidewalks going down the dead-end street should not be a priority, and you need to be able to get there on a sidewalk in order to require a sidewalk. You know, obviously, I think when we did a survey, one oh six, twenty-eight, South Street, Howard Street, were all priorities, so we'll take closer looks at those, and then work with our legislature, and hopefully find some avenues for the town to get money.
Yeah, I think if you look at public, public, public safety is a, you know, is a big factor there, and the approaches to the school, and then, you know, the traffic that are on those streets, I mean, you're gonna take that in consideration, I mean...
Our next step will be to have Reverend Ashton make a wonderful meal like she always does.
Yeah, there we go.
And we'll have a meeting at the first church, and we could perhaps alternate with the Riverbend Country Club if they wish to host us.
Can you remember?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I like that.
And, oh, it's so good.
This guy's been there before, she did some of the...
I may just drag that off for a few years, a sidewalk, eh? But what I'm gonna do is put together a list of all the people that said they'd like to be involved, which is great, there's a lot of new names, perhaps because we're using social media rather than the, you know, the people that, you look through the town report, we still have a lot of people serving on a lot of committees, a few people serving on a lot of committees. So, it's nice to have a lot of new names, and John Delano's gonna be a huge asset, in fact, John's an engineer, and has also, has already volunteered some of his services to engineer the walk along River Street, which is outstanding, and he has an army ready to work on it, of other engineers that he's already volunteered.
Good.
So, I think it's gonna, we're gonna have some great progress. As I always say, when it comes to anything in town, you gotta put up a shut-up, I do think it's gonna cost the town some money, but there are some crucial areas that need sidewalks, especially Route one oh six on the east side of town.
Okay, great, thank you.
Did I say it all, Rev?
Thank you.
Nice.
Very good.
You talk.
Very good. Okay, so, moving on to goal four, which is an intermunicipal sewer, we have correspondence from Mr. Duggan, is that who you're there, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, correspondence from Treasurer Collector John Duggan. As team leader of the intermunicipal sewer, goal five, of the West Bridgewater Strategic Planning Committee, I would like to present to the Board of Selectmen an update on our progress. Committee, I would like to present to the Board of Selectmen an update on our progress. I've been able to recruit the following members to this, to this goal. Executive Administrator Assistant, Administrative Assistant Mallory Cole, Town Account Anne McNorton, Pearl Road resident David Flynn, Board of Health member Linda Simpson, Board of Health Agent Robert Casper. I am also pursuing, pursuing a representative from the water department. Last month, I met with, this is John Duggan speaking, I met with State Representative and Brockton City Councilor Michelle Dubois to discuss the, this issue. Ms. Dubois offered to have committee members tour the city sewerage treatment facility in the near future with representatives of the Brockton DPW department. I plan to take Ms. Dubois up on her offer after the committee's initial meeting in late November, early December. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to update the board on this goal. So, it looks like there's some progress in that goal as well. And then, the open, goal five, which is open space and recreation plans, that's Jeff Ryan, who was the team leader on that.
He never forwarded a letter, which is fine. We were emailing back and forth, and if you'll remember, Forrest Broman was going to co-, co-lead that goal, and for some reasons, he, he's not doing that. So, Jeff did lose a little time trying to coordinate. So, I stumbled across, I was cleaning off my desktop, like on my computer, and I stumbled across a conservation plan. I don't even know who did it, but it was on there and I sent it over to him to look at. Maybe he can help. So, he's got that, and he, I also...
Who were the other members, though? I don't have that sheet with me.
Um, I don't think anybody else is on there. He has reached out to some people, he didn't give me any names, but I suggested he contact Matt Pennella. I don't know if you remember him, he's the open space chairman, younger person, but a new name. And he's really breathed in a lot of life into the open space committee. So, I put him in there, and I know that Matt has some contacts as well, so, thought that would be a good connection for him to use.
All right, good. So, that's, that's... Very good. Thank you. Thank you for the update. So, it's really great to see some excitement around this strategic planning process. So, we started it before, took a little break, now we're back on it. And it's great to see, because overall, all these plans that we talk about, strategic plans for our future, is our way to try to make sure that we're, we have a plan for the road ahead. And it's great to see all the excitement around that. So, that's great to see. Thank you to all the members and all the, all the team leaders. We appreciate it. All right, moving on, under warranted Board of Selectmen business, it's taken a motion to approve amended to the October 7th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Moved second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Genevieve. Okay, determine priorities for community compact programs. So, we talked a couple of meetings ago about a program sponsored by Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Karen Pledo, and it's called the Compact Program, so, Community Compact Program. So, we have in our packet the areas of best practice. Now, we just talked about a couple of things. We talked about sewer, we talked about sidewalks, we talked about open space recreation plans, all those sorts of things. So, the hope is that we can find some of these best practices in some of these areas where we can engage the help of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to help us to get there with some of these initiatives. So, I don't know if you guys had the opportunity to go through it. Administrator Gagnon, do you have anything to add on, you know, where do you think we should go with the process? I have my own ideas about how, what we should use, but Administrator Gagnon, other members of the board?
Well, I think that if you look at page 28, under housing and economic development, one of the subcategories is infrastructure. So, you could certainly put sewer within that category.
Yeah.
On page 29, under transportation, citizen safety, you could also look at safe routes to school, which would help out with the sidewalks. It's not a perfect fit, but it's at least something close. At a meeting that I was at with the M-M-M-A a handful of months ago, they had said that if there is something that is not a perfect fit, that you could put it in under other.
Yeah, there is an other section.
So, if you tell me what priorities you want to target, then what I can do is that when I fill out the application, then I can place it in under other, based on what I'm being told, and then we would submit it from there.
So, besides the sewer and the sidewalk, we have public safety, that area, we have talked a lot about as a board, about what are we going to do about the, about that area with the vacant Shaws Plaza up on North Main Street? You know, is there a way we can incorporate that either into one of these, or maybe that becomes one of our other items, as far as help with the economic development of that area?
I suppose you can incorporate that in.
Well, I think if you look at the biggest area that I think we really need to promote, obviously, in the retail area is the south side, Brockton, south side, West Bridgewater, north side line. But also the industrial park, if there was some type of marketing mechanism to help to recruit businesses to areas like that, because, you know, presentation like we got tonight's pretty, it's nice houses, we'll bring people to town, but houses don't really make the town money, it actually costs us money. And what we really need to do is focus on bringing up that economic development. I know we revamped that committee a little bit, but we have a lot of industrial space that is, is better for the town, growth in the industrial area.
But part of that growth is really contingent on the whole sewer issue. So, we can incorporate that on, I think you said it's infrastructure maybe is the place where that would fall. And that would also, that would also maybe tie in somehow with our strategic goal in intermunicipal sewer. Because I think the biggest, the biggest hindrance we have up in that industrial area is sewer. So, right? Got it, great?
Yeah, but as technology changes, septic systems become smaller and smaller and more viable to build on independent, you know, smaller treatment facilities.
Like that.
The big issue is we have lots of great ideas, even locally, without the state involvement, but the biggest issue is money and funding.
Okay, so, we talked about sidewalks, sewers, the area occupied by the vacant Shaws, economic development. Are those, are there any other areas that we think we might want to try to get some assistance through the compact program?
What's in with some?
Yeah, I know, well. I mean, I think that we picked two or three things to focus on, you know, we got a better chance and we could say everything, but. Do you guys have anything more that you want to add to that?
If you want to add, continuing the streetlight, I mean, traffic light things, we certainly need the traffic light at...
And that would go into transportation, or?
Yeah.
On to transportation.
And we haven't got the, we appropriated money for, for the engineer, and we certainly need a push to get a light there on East Street.
You know, I'm just trying to figure where that would fall, under here? I'm guessing under transportation, but I don't really see anything tightly...
That also ties right in with that economic development area there, too. You know, the lights would help that area.
We're getting in and out of there.
Maybe citizen safety?
Again, it's not a perfect fit, but I can fill it out and they'll let us know.
Yeah, right. Maybe citizen safety under transportation?
Yeah, so unfortunately, the way this, the program is set up, I can't actually see the application until I request a username and password. So, that's why with this vote, I will then be able to communicate to them that the selectmen would like to go forward, they'll then forward over username and password, then I'll be able to actually access the application and fill it out accordingly. So, I'm hoping that it's going to allow me a quote-unquote "other" area, so that way, under the clause of citizen safety, we already do some of these items, which I think is good.
Right.
And that we can piggyback off of it and then attempt to maybe incorporate streetlights as well.
Okay. Good. Okay. We're good with that. Do we need a motion for that?
I guess the only motion I would ask you to take is, is that if you're in favor of soliciting the state and, to fill out a community compact with those items, then just take a vote and then I'll, I'll implement from there.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Move second and further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Genevieve. Okay, thank you, and thank you for your work in pushing this forward. Talking about this like for three meetings now, so, it's good to see you finally move along a little bit. Reschedule December 2nd selectmen's meeting. We have a selectmen's meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 2nd. I'd like to request that we meet on Thursday, December 3rd.
I'll make that motion, change the meeting night.
All right, I'll, second it.
Move second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is to name November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. So, Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month is the month of November. In the past, the past couple of years, we've had a proclamation to name November the Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Just a couple of quick facts about pancreatic cancer. Seven percent average five-year survival rate for pancreatic cancer patients. That coupled with the rising incidence rate would make in 2020, pancreatic cancer the second main cause of cancer-related deaths in the United States. There are the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network that were, that has affiliates across the country, works toward what is called waging hope, to try to get research and resources and clinical trials, and doctors delivering best practices, and more public awareness and visibility with pancreatic cancer. So, I would like to suggest that we do name November as Pancreatic Cancer Month, Awareness Month. There is information that you can gather from some of these flyers that I have here with me this evening. And I would also like to ask that Christina Telly find those purple, those purple, like, like Administrator Gagnon's shirt, those purple lights.
Get right on them with the two.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So am I. Hello.
I thought you were going the branding maroon, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Not this month.
So, I'd like to suggest that you get, if you can drag those purple lights out and light the tunnel up on. And November 13th actually is Way of Purple Day across the country. So, we might want to consider putting that into proclamation.
I'm sorry, what was that last bit?
November 13th.
Okay.
Is Way of Purple Day.
Move the motion to, I mean, I'm...
I'll second it.
Thank you. You got it, Ellen. So moved.
Move second, any further discussion?
Just ask that periodically on our Facebook, if you can get those brochures to Mallory, we post some facts sporadically throughout the month.
It's always super depressing.
What is?
The sad facts of pancreatic cancer. We do a ribbon.
We can find some stories about survival and...
Okay.
Struggles.
Do a ribbon at least. Do a ribbon at least.
Yeah, yeah. Survival's not seven percent average five-year survival rate. It's pretty low. Okay, moving on to communication and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. So, we have a write, a request from, page this is on 31, let me see if I can find it. So, the Agricultural Commission has requested that, a rough draft of requesting the placement of two "right to farm" signs on the state road, Route 28.
We have to get permission, we have to get permission from the state on that.
Well, this is how the process starts, is that they're looking for local support. So, that's why the Agricultural Commission is requesting the selectmen to review, make comments and suggestions if appropriate, and hopefully approve their request. And then from there, they will then forward it over to the state. You will see that the easiest way to look at this is to look at first on page 35. On page 35, you will see that that is your, the first choice for their sign coming from Bridgewater into the town of West Bridgewater. That is about a quarter of a mile down from the Brockton line where the Lucini bus line is, obviously on the opposite side. I drove it, I mean, it's pretty wooded, if it's going to go anywhere, I don't think that that has any negative impacts. I, I think they actually picked a pretty good spot for it. So, that would be their first choice. And then if you scroll to page 37, I don't have a clue where they got this picture from, because it's include, it's interesting that that's the old McDonald's, which is now the Family Dollar. But in any event, that is then where the sign would be coming from Brockton, heading southbound into West Bridgewater. Again, looking at it, driving out there seems like an appropriate place. So, if you're in agreement, you would just take a vote to support it, and whatever other suggestions that you may have.
I'll make a motion to...
Was this last one the second sign?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to support it. I think it's a good idea.
Move, do I hear a second?
I'll second, but I do have some...
Okay, so move in second, any further discussion?
I would just like to ask that they try to piggyback on a sign that's already there. There's the water ban, a sign that's already there of the right to farm. If you're looking at McDonald's, it's the blue sign that warns people about the water, state water ban.
Oh, is that what that says?
Yeah, I believe so.
So, do you, is it that you like, you want it to be that color, or?
No, I'd like it on the same pole.
Oh, on the same pole.
Move that sign down and put it on that same pole.
Oh, yeah, where you can see it.
So, it's, so we don't have signs every five feet. I, I agree with the concept, but I hate signs, you know. And if they could try to do the same thing on the other one, I, I don't have a picture of that exact area, but if there's somewhere Lenny feels is appropriate to piggyback with another community sign, that'd be great. And that they book identical to the other two already posted.
Okay. So, that's a motion, amended a motion?
That would be the amendment.
Yeah.
Second on the amended motion?
Yeah.
Okay, move in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
The correspondence from the public to determine course of action, approval request from Bureau of Ways Foundation to sell Christmas trees and wreaths from November 28th to December 22nd, weekdays 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Saturdays and Sundays 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. This has been approved by Billy and Sackus St. Solari.
This comes in every year. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request.
Would you add with that, that we waive the fee?
And waive the fee.
And I'd like to add that the, any and all signage be moved within seven days of the end of their tree sale.
Okay, can I add that to it?
Okay, so, it's amended, second amended, the amended?
Yeah.
Move second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Genevieve. Okay, public comment period?
No, I think, I think we should have sent a letter up to Brockton congratulating the mayor, and Brady, and the senator, both of them.
Is that a motion?
Yep.
I hate to keep amending it, but I'd like to include the city councils also.
Well, thanks.
Really interact with their schools, it's not much. And my hopes are that the next term with the mayor, we work even closer together on some joint projects, specifically sewerage in that economic area.
Okay, so move in second, let us, congratulations to the mayor of the city of Brockton, the city councils in the city of Brockton, and the newly elected state senator for that district.
Second.
Okay, second, move second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other public comment? I got a couple things, but, things going on. Any other public, a public comment? Okay, we're going to go through a couple of things, a couple of great things that are going on, as announcements, okay? On Saturday, November 14th, Southeastern Regional Vocational Technical School will hold its annual open house from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The open house is an opportunity for the general public, including community officials, to tour the facilities and see for themselves the high-quality, free public education that is available to students from our nine communities. It's designated, is designed to demonstrate the variety of academic and vocational technical programs that Southeastern offers as a post-secondary program. So, if you're planning to attend, you can get a private tour if you would like one.
What hours is that?
That's Saturday, November 14th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And we also have another great thing going on, next Wednesday is the, I don't think it's on here in the agenda, right? So, next Wednesday is the Tri-Town Veterans Day commemoration and the Tri-Town Parade, the theme Veterans Keep Our Country Strong. It's going to form on, it's a tri-town between Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, and West Bridgewater, forming on Spring Street in East Bridgewater at 9:00 a.m., then stepping off at 10:00 a.m., then to Central Street, and then to Central Street, where the exercises at the Town Common on Central Street will take place. on Central Street, which will take place starting at eleven a.m. in East Bridgewater, Massachusetts. So we will have representation from all three of the towns in the tri-town and ceremony exercises on the common. So if you're interested, that's next Wednesday, November eleventh. Okay, moving on to town administrators' report.
Thank you. You will see on page forty-six, I have written correspondence to the board asking you to award four vehicles for disposal of surplus goods, three old police vehicles and an old van. We went out to written bid. We received three sealed bids through the silent auction. And so the winning bidder was Everett's Auto Sales. And so I would respectfully request the board to ratify that vote and to dispose of the goods as requested.
We can make a motion to award that to Everett's little bid.
Move in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Second item on your agenda is in reference to the Family Dollar. As you're aware, the, that area of town is on the Brockton sewer line. That area has always been serviced by the city of Brockton on a direct pay, meaning that the city of Brockton directly bills the vendor, and the vendor directly pays the sewer and water department of Brockton. Excuse me. The city of Brockton is now attempting to make a change in that process. After discussion over the last handful of months, it appeared that that's what we were looking to, we were willing to acquiesce to that request in reference to the Family Dollar. So there are two documents in your folder. One is a twenty-year IMA or intermunicipal agreement that allows the city of Brockton to actually bill the town of West Bridgewater for the sewer that the Family Dollar is going to utilize or create. And then the town of West Bridgewater will then bill Family Dollar the same amount. So it's not going to cost us anything. The reason for that is because if we had our own structure, and if somebody didn't pay a bill, then by law, we can lien their property the way you would if somebody did not pay their tax bill or their water bill. However, there is a provision in state law that says that you cannot lien a property outside of your jurisdiction. So that means that for Family Dollar, if they don't pay the bill directly to the city of Brockton, the city of Brockton does not have a tool to be able to lien their property. That is what the request of the IMA is. Instead, they would do like anybody else would do, is that they would just bring them to court, and they're looking to try to be able to mitigate that issue. I have worked hand-in-hand with legal counsel on this, along with their legal counsel and the city of Brockton's legal counsel. And so before you is that IMA. A couple of things that I do want to let you know is that we don't have a provision, because we're a town form of government, that we can actually pay the bill on behalf of Family Dollar. So what we will do is, is that in the short term, is that Family Dollar is going to walk down, hand us a check, and we will forward the check. However, at town meeting, we are going to need to set up a revolving account that will be administered through the Board of Selectment's office. So that way, we can actually collect the funds from Family Dollar and then pay out directly to the city of Brockton without having to seek an appropriation. That'll be a step we do at town meeting, but that will be a step we'll need to do as part of this IMA. The second agreement that I will ask you to sign is only an agreement between the developer and the town of West Bridgewater. And what it does is it spells out that we will lien their property if they do not pay the bill. In addition to that, because there's going to be some administrative work on behalf of our staffs, is that they're going to be required to pay us a hundred-dollar annual license fee. And in addition to that, they're going to pay us a one-time six-hundred-dollar escrow account that will sit in the fund, so that way we've had a later date that instead of leaning their property, we want to be able to close the account, pay it out of that bill, we have immediate access to additional funds. At this point, their average annual bill is going to be roughly a hundred and fifty dollars. So that six-hundred dollars would be equivalent to about four years' worth of payments. So that gives us plenty enough room in that budget. But one of my concerns, because this is a twenty-year agreement, is that twelve years from now, today's annual rate may be equivalent to then a quarterly rate. So I want to make sure we had enough money with the future in mind. So again, I would, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but I would ask that you take two votes for both agreements and then to execute the agreements as well.
I'll discuss that a little bit. I'm not really, I'm going to sign this, you know, I'm going to go along with it. We didn't give Family Dollar any kind of a notice. What were we going to do? We're setting up ourselves a future here. It's a litigation, and it's going to end up costing us money. This is just a stat, okay? Is this the way the board wants to handle everything coming in from now on here? We can take the vote, but I, I just don't think that we should be guaranteeing anybody, you know, to pay a bill, because it isn't West Bridgewater, but it's Brockton's bill.
But what we're talking about here right now is, we have an IMA agreement before us with Brockton. So what we're talking about is, are we going to sign this agreement?
Yeah, we're talking about this agreement, but I think the board, and you brought up Sewer Ridge tonight, I think that the board ought to take a look at it before we get another one come in. Because we're opening up Pandora's Box. If we do it for one person, it's probably expecting the next one that comes along. It's going to get the same treatment. And it's going to, it's going to cost us dearly over the years.
So getting back to the matter at hand...
I do have one question. Why can't Family Dollar pay their bill themselves?
Directly.
Directly, yeah.
And I understand where, if the city doesn't get payment, then we're liable for the balance. And then, of course, we go ahead and we put a lien on it, just like we would for anything else, if they were to do a water bill or anything, there'll be a municipal lien, which we're the first to be paid. But why can't they just pay the bill direct?
They can, except that we're going to lose some control. And since we're the real customer, we like to make sure that we have firsthand knowledge. They're only going to get billed on a quarterly basis. So if we forward the invoice to Family Dollar, and for whatever reason they don't pay, we won't know for another ninety days. City of Brockton's going to bill us, not just for the new usage, now you're going to be in the RAREs, plus you're going to be in the RAREs' interest. So already, just after ninety days, we're going to be behind the eight ball.
So it's just to control...
It really is. It really is.
Like I said, I think I got a point there of what we're going to do in the future. I think we're going to have to talk further.
Well, that is one of the strategic plans, so that can be addressed.
But I don't want to, you know, be any business now, too. We got a new business coming in, we're trying to build the place up, and there's no way that I want to, you know, vote no on this thing, because, but it does bother me, what's being done here. I mean, and it's taken so long to get this agreement, you know, it's about six months. I mean, you know...
So like, like what Lawrence just mentioned, it is one of our intermunicipal sewer, is one of our strategic goals, so maybe it will come out as some type of a...
Standard agreement.
Yeah, standard agreement or something.
I'll make a motion to sign the agreement.
In the strategic planning goal.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, move second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
If you could, there's actually two documents.
Another motion, right.
Right, so one agreement is the local agreement, and the other one is the IMA.
Make a motion to sign the IMA.
All right, I'll second it.
So move in second. So the first motion was for the...
The first one was the local.
The local one, okay. This one, sorry, is for the IMA. Okay, move in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is in reference to a comp time policy. You may recall, a little over a month ago, I presented an initial draft on comp time policy for non-union contractual employees that answer to the Board of Selectment. At that point, I requested that I would pass along that information to all of those employees to solicit their feedback. And I did receive some feedback, and it was interesting, because most of it was actually consensual, even though they didn't interact with each other, they actually had the same thoughts and ideas. So I have actually incorporated those into this draft. At this point, I would ask the board just to accept it for review, and then I will work with the chair, fine-tune it, and then present it back to the board at a future date for you to actually, to pass it at that point.
So move.
Move second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for doing that.
You're very welcome.
Talking about for a while.
Yep, you're very welcome. Last on the agenda is, is that, you may recall at the last meeting, I talked about the Baker Administration that was putting together an administration and finance listening sessions specific to municipal issues or concerns, not pertaining to budgets, but pertaining to statute and regulations that thwarted or frustrated our ability to be able to do business on a daily basis. So I went to that meeting on Monday in Shrewsbury at a UMass facility. It was excellent. They had sixteen panelists there, all from the Baker Administration, senior positions. And so I testified on four different issues. I've included the letter that I forwarded to the administration in your packet. The four issues was, one, was in reference to performance evaluations not being linked to contractual obligations, contractual negotiations in executive session. Surprisingly, they were absolutely unaware of the issue, and they were very receptive to it, because common sense says it's hard to have contractual negotiations without having some discussion as to whether or not you're doing a good job or not. And everybody agrees that in a city form of government, in a school form of government, in a town manager form of government, a hundred percent of those evaluations are done and are not having to be done in an open session. It's only when the Board of Selectment is the appointing authority, and that obviously puts the town at a disadvantage, and they were absolutely in agreement with that. So we'll see where it goes. The second item that I noted was the concern of the fact that whenever the vocational school notifies us of their budget, that we have very limited ability to be able to impact or negotiate that number. So I forwarded that. I will let you know that there's actually a statewide survey in reference to foundational budget net school spending, because our legislation at this point is about twenty-two years old, and it's time for some refinement to it. So...
Was there any discussion around this?
Very minimal, because again, there is an ongoing committee working on that issue. But again, they were receptive.
They're not producing anything, though.
Well, I mean, he's only been in for a year. Actually, he's been in for less than that, and...
Oh, okay. So this isn't a longstanding committee?
No, this is something that's...
Okay, all right.
Maybe three months old.
This is the one that came up with the list.
No, I mean, I mean about the regional school budget, though. Wasn't there already something?
No, about three, maybe four months ago, the MMA has been heavily involved, including the schools have been heavily involved. Because one of the items, for example, is that twenty years ago, is that we didn't have little things called computers. And there is great computer infrastructure and expense now. Can you, should the town be able to use that as part of what it's spending on the schools? So there are concerns from both the school side and the town side as to whether or not the formula is accurate and correct. It's really not. So they're already starting to study it. But yeah, I mentioned it. The third item on the agenda was in reference to, going by memory...
Newspapers?
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. In reference to newspapers. The statute's over a hundred years old. And at that point, the only way to be able to communicate to the public that anything was going to be discussed at a public hearing was through newspaper. So as circulation rates decrease, the expense adds are actually increasing, because newspapers have fixed costs. But as we know, fewer people are utilizing them, it's expensive to the taxpayer, and with the ability to be able to now put on Facebook, Twitter, and our respective websites, again, they were very, very receptive to this idea. So we'll see where they go with that. And the last item on the agenda was end-of-year transfers. I actually placed it on, because right now, in two thousand and six, the Romney Administration was very helpful to municipalities in our form of government, where it allows three percent of an original appropriation of five thousand dollars to do a transfer. If you recall, we do end-of-year transfers. But it's limited. It really shouldn't be limited. Cities can do it all the time, towns should have the same flexibility. And again, they were very, very receptive. We're fortunate, because one of the senior administrators that's on there, Sean Cronin, was a deputy town administrator from Brookline for over sixteen years. He understands this issue very well, and again, he was very receptive as well. So with that said, if you have any questions, and if not, that's the end of my report.
So how was, how, was this all three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns?
Yeah, there was probably about eighty-five people there. There are a dozen listening sessions throughout the state. The closest one to us was in Brockton, but it was prior to our last meeting. And so I want to talk to you before I went.
Yeah, so do you think it was well-attended, then, for the amount of people that would, because I guess you could come from anywhere.
That is correct. I will say, what was interesting was that the number one concern there was in reference to water in sewer. And that is because there is some new state regulations that are going to be very onerous on municipalities on the ability to be able to extract water out of the ground. What they are proposing is a baseline of two thousand and five, and you cannot extract water above and beyond that number. And if you do, that you have to mitigate for it. So for example, if the town of West Bridgewater has six thousand residents in two thousand and five, and has sixty-six hundred residents later, obviously, you need more water. You've got to mitigate for that. So there was a lot of concern, I think rightly so, but there was a lot of concern about that. So it's mostly attended by water superintendents and water commissioners and the like.
You know, I think, David, you know, I know you've done very, very good in finances, and we got through the year, and the first year, you know, putting a new school on. But there's been some changes. And, you know, I was with the town accountant at the town meeting, was kind of asking, I was kind of curious of, you know, what we appropriated for electricity and what the actual bill is. She just didn't want to rattle the figures out. And since then, I mean, Jerry remembers that, and so does Nancy, we got that money from the meals tax to offset that. But as the year goes along, and I know it's going to probably take two years to really know where we stand as far as the bill goes for the school. Okay, now, we had, when we started the budget, we had a kindergarten that was part-time. Now it's full-time. All these added expenses. Now we got the school coming in, Spring Street School, for other added expenses. And my question is, David, where do we really stand here as far as the school and the school spending? I know we probably won't be able to get that, what, maybe in December or January? David, how can we be assured that, you know, that we're going to have the money to do what we've been doing, like what we did this year? I mean, you only got so much money to allocate.
So for FY sixteen, I think we're in pretty good shape, unless some expenses come in that nobody could have foresaw. And then budgets, probably about thirty days from now, I'll ask you to authorize me to send out a budget message. And at that point, I'll collect budgets, and then I'll start to seek to see exactly what budgets, you know, what the budget requests are. But that would be FY seventeen, and I just, I don't know what those are at this point.
Yeah. But I mean, I'd like to, you know, if there's such a thing as we can get a handle, because as we move on, because I kind of follow East Bridgewater over there, and what happened to them there, they thought they had the money, and then all of a sudden, they didn't. You know, and when everything leveled off, because a lot of them things were estimates. You know, and, you know, I'd look more or less at the facts, you know?
Well, I think we have a lot of contingency plans built in, and a lot of backup plans built in, and I have a lot of faith in the finance office in-town hall, who's been working hand-in-hand with the finance manager over at the school, who's done an outstanding job. So I'm very confident we're not going to get in that situation. And we also get the expense reports throughout the year that will show the percentages, and as long as they coincide with what they've been in the past, we're in good shape. But I have a lot of faith that they built in all the additional costs necessary, and I think we all emphasized that during the year, that we don't want to be in the position as the other towns, and we are going to continue to pay down the school loan faster and not on the, with no additional taxes.
As it stands now, what is it, about sixty percent that, you don't know?
Yeah, I mean, I think that you're referring to the appropriation from the school side to the town side. I mean, that could be, I'd have to, that sounds about right, but again, I'd have to look at the numbers.
Okay.
Motion again. I'll second.
Move second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.